Okay. Perfect, here. Welcome to our special council meeting on September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty three. This meeting has been called for the following specific purposes. Consideration of the summary recommendations from the Planning and Development Committee meeting held September twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. Consideration of the summary of recommendations from the Brampton Heritage Board meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Consideration of various bylaws as listed on the special meeting agenda to amend the zoning bylaw or official plan in response to matters considered by the Planning Development Committee. Consideration of closed station business being the following open meeting exception under section two, three, nine, two, C and K of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, and a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board property acquisition matter. Under council's meeting rules, no other new business can be considered at the special meeting. I will have the clerk do a roll call.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I'll call members' names. Please indicate your presence. Counselor Tor.
Present.
Present. Deputy Mayor Singh is present. Counselor Fortini?
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Power has indicated he's absent for other municipal business. Counselor Maderos?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Brown?
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Keenan?
Present.
Present. Counselor Paleshi?
Present.
Present. Counselor Barar?
Present.
Present. Counselor Visante?
Present.
Counselor Santos?
Present.
Present. All members are present, save and except for Counselor Power, who's absent.
Thank you. We are now at item two, approval of the agenda. We have a motion moved by Counselor Tor and seconded by Counselor Keenan to approve.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, just before approval of the agenda, just to provide some updates to council. There was a revised agenda published this morning for the special council meeting, which includes four point one and four point two. Four point one is correspondence regarding item five point two on the agenda, recommendations from the Planning and Development Committee. Item four point two is an added delegation regarding item five point two, the Planning and Development Committee recommendations from its meeting on Monday night. We also have, that'll be identified as four point three, two delegations, A and B, from Samir Shaw Credit Valley Residents Association and Ramaljit Sandhu, Brampton resident. And both of these delegations are in regards to item five point two on today's agenda, specifically recommendation PDC one twenty nine dash two thousand and twenty three on the city-initiated official plan for the Credit Valley Secondary Plan, Area forty five.
Thank you. We are now at item two, approval of the agenda. We have a motion moved by Counselor Tor and seconded by Counselor Keenan to approve the agenda. All in favor? The motion carries. We are now at item three, declarations of interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Does any member have a declaration of pecuniary interest under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act for any matter to be considered on today's agenda? If none, the clerk will note for the minutes. Moving on to delegations, we have correspondence four point one and then delegation four point two, which is from Matthew LaCottos Hayward on behalf of David Bronsgill Goodman's L.P.
Tammy, can you bring Matthew into the session for his delegation? So Matthew, you are in the session. You can unmute your mic and turn on your video if you so choose. You have up to five minutes to address council.
Good, good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good, good morning, Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you on this topic. My name is Matthew LaCottos Hayward, and I am counsel to the applicant of this particular item, Centennial Mall Brampton Limited. As you know, our client owns two seventy seven Boden Street East, which I will refer to as The Lands. Now, our client has proposed a three-phase transit-oriented development for Centennial Mall, and that will provide an exciting new vision and direction for The Lands. The proposal will contain two thousand two hundred and seventy-four residential units, eleven, sorry, one thousand one hundred and eighty-two units, of which are being created in the first phase. As staff acknowledge, this proposal is within a strategic growth area, and the proposal is consistent within conforms to higher order policy direction. The purpose of my delegation today is that our client is concerned about the proposed H symbol that is discussed within staff's recommendations relating to sanitary servicing. And this is a condition that has arisen entirely due to the region of Peel. The region has only recently advised that there is insufficient sewer capacity to service the Phase One development, which has led to a request to include an H symbol in the zoning to ensure that the proper infrastructure is in place first. Let me be clear, though, that our client agrees that having the correct infrastructure in place before development can occur is important. However, an H symbol is the wrong instrument to use. An H symbol will require a further Planning Act application, requires our client to rely on the region to determine that a servicing master plan is satisfactory, and this creates uncertainty and further delays a proposal that will inject significant new housing into the city. However, I want to assure council that the Planning Act has a specific tool that contemplates the dilemma that the city and our client faces. Section thirty-four, sub five, allows a zoning bylaw to prohibit the use of land until such municipal services set out in the bylaw are available. Given as well that our client is willing to explore entering into servicing agreements with the city, we are confident that the city will be fully protected against the possibility of development with insufficient infrastructure without having to resort to an H symbol. And we know that the city is in fact preparing to adopt this exact approach for a different property at two fifty-three Queen Street West, which is located in the same sewer shed as The Lands. I believe that it's being considered at this council meeting, and I would urge council to adopt the same approach for our client. Now, our submission package that I sent along with my delegation request includes redline versions of the official plan and zoning bylaw amendments for review, and we would request that council endorse those. Now, we understand that this will require council to formally adopt the bylaws and punt its consideration to a future meeting on October eighteenth, and our client supports that as well. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have with respect to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions? Hearing and seeing, huh? Oh, Mayor Brown?
Just a quick one. Obviously, I've spoken a lot about my concerns of the lack of servicing from the, the region of Peel, and, you know, we're in a housing crisis, and we continue to hear examples of housing put on hold because of servicing not being provided by the region. Just out of curiosity, how does this affect the viability of the project? You know, I know sometimes there's issues with financing if a hold is put on a project. Would this hold be lethally detrimental to, to your project? And, you know, how much of a surprise was this?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. I, I think that's a great question, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. The, an H symbol always creates uncertainty with a project, particularly given that the region is still conducting its infrastructure planning. In this particular case, its final infrastructure planning is not scheduled to be complete until two thousand and twenty-four, and the H symbol in fact requires that the region be fully satisfied with the, with a sanitary master plan before development can proceed and an application to lift the H symbol is granted. That creates uncertainty from a financing perspective, as we don't know when the region will accept that. We don't know how long that will further delay the process by regional staff reviewing, and that is further rendered uncertain, given that as well, the region, as you probably know, is, is undergoing this dissolution process. And so that, that condition creates a bit of uncertainty that will further delay the, the, the ability to, for our client to bring this project into force in effect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody, Mayor Brown, do you have any more questions?
No, no further questions.
Okay. Do any other members have any questions? I don't see any in person or online, so I will have a motion moved by Mayor Brown and seconded by Counselor Santos to receive the delegation. Is anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, that carries. Moving on to four point three is a delegation on behalf of the Credit Valley residents. We will bring in the appropriate parties in the room to delegate.
Samir, you are in the session. You have up to five minutes to address committee, or council, excuse me.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and rest of the council. I, I won't take much time here, just one request with various correspondences and add it to public record as well as this meeting. A follow-up request to everybody to go through each and every line of correspondences, because there are few points which are repeatedly raised, as well as the residents having the feeling that there is no collaborative design sessions happening as recommended in Brampton Vision two thousand and twenty-four as well. So with that, not to repeat everything from earlier this Monday, as well as past few months, another request on behalf of residents of Credit Valley area and Credit Valley Residents Association to go through all the correspondences and consider them for any other processing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any members have any questions? Seeing and hearing none, is that the last delegation?
Through you, Mr. Chair, there is a second delegation.
Okay.
From Ramaljit. Ramaljit, you are in the session. You have up to five minutes to address council. You can unmute your mic.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Perfect. So I was in the session on Monday as well, and I just want to give a bit of a background that I do live in the area, and maybe it's a repetition what I'm going to say, but I do have an executive home in the area, Ward Four to be exact, just next to the, on the strip of Queen West. I thought on Monday it was recommended that there's going to be low-density construction, and I thought the matter was closed, but since this is another meeting coming up, I'm sure this is going to be discussed further. So I just wanted to state my point that this is not a suitable strip, Queen Street West, to be building mid and high rises, and that it should stay a low density. One, because of the residents who've been paying taxes for over fifteen years owning executive homes, and they would like to see something which is similar to their house. So yes, sustainable growth going on, but not growth which is harming us or making our properties go down. Secondly, this is not a viable area in terms of transit, because there is proposal for BRT. Nothing has been approved. We only have a simple Zoom service in the area. There is no big bus terminal. There are no highways close by. The schools are further. There are no proposed schools, except for one proposed separate school. So no public elementary school proposed, no middle elementary, no high elementary. There is no shopping center, no mall. These are all the characteristics of an area which should, which could probably have mid to high rises. So I'm maintaining that this should stay as low density. The other thing I wanted to mention is the bottleneck that's been created at Queen already, Queen Street West. It's going to increase it. It's going to increase the bottlenecks. The traffic studies have been done, I understand, but they are not taking into account all the other new developments that are taking place right now. There are many going on right now. In fact, when I came this morning, it took me forever. A strip which should take me two minutes to pass took me good twenty minutes. And that's mostly what I need to say, because the focus, the strategic focus area of this recommendation is health and well-being. It's transit and connectivity, growing sensible urban centers, job creation, which none of these mid to high rises will do. It will not take into account our health and well-being. It's not going to increase, it's going to not increase the transit and connectivity. No jobs are being created, so then why are we going to promote this? So thank you to Counselor Keenan, and thank you to Counselor Paleshi for recommending the other day, low density, if this could be taken into account as we go further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any members have any questions? I don't see any online either, so I have a motion moved by Counselor Keenan and Counselor Santos to receive delegation four point three and four point four. Is anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to five point one is a summary recommendation from the Brampton Heritage Board's September nineteenth meeting. The board recommendations are here for council's consideration, and the full set of minutes will be presented to the next Planning and Development Committee meeting for receipt. Do any members have any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, thank you. I have a motion moved by Counselor Tor and seconded by Counselor Santos to approve the committee recommendations. All in favor? The motion carries. Moving on, our next item is five point two, Planning and Development Committee held, held a meeting on September twenty fifth. The committee recommendations are here for council's consideration. The full minutes will be presented to the October eighteenth council meeting for receipt. I will now pass the chair to Counselor Paleshi to lead council into consideration of the committee recommendations. Counselor Paleshi?
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Mr. Acting Mayor, through you, to members of council. As Chair of Planning Committee, I'm, and also, if you've heard from the residents, they were a little confused why these minutes have come to the special council meeting. I too am confused as to why these minutes are here before us today. Was not consulted on these minutes coming to the special council meeting. So it's my recommendation as Chair of Planning, this be deferred until the next council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Okay. So are you putting, you would put the deferral on?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. Who's your secondor?
It, it is a procedural motion, so it doesn't require a secondor unless somebody wishes to second.
Oh, Mayor Brown has his hand up, I think he wants, well, I'll let, if Counselor Paleshi is chairing, then he would.
Yes, he'll take the motion.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Brown.
And just a reminder to members of council, a deferral motion is not debatable.
I'm just going to the vote. Thank you, Peter, if you can call the vote.
So through you, to Counselor Paleshi's chair. Chair could call the vote. There's no request for a recorded vote that I'm aware of.
And I, there's people, I'm online, so I'm not able to, to see or, or see hands, so I guess I would call a recorded vote.
Okay. A recorded vote has been requested on a deferral of item five point two to the next regular meeting of council. All those in favor of the deferral, please indicate. Counselor Tor? It's a yes. Deputy Mayor Singh? It's a no. Counselor Fortini?
Oh.
That's, that's a no. Counselor Power is absent. Counselor Maderos?
No.
It's a no. Mayor Brown?
No.
It's a no. Counselor Keenan? That's a no. Counsel, Chair Paleshi?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Barar? That's a yes? Counselor Visante?
No.
That was no? Counselor Santos?
No.
That's no? The, the deferral motion does not carry. The vote is three to seven.
Thanks, Peter. Members of council, you have before you the Planning Committee, Development Committee minutes of September twenty fifth. Are there any questions?
Counselor Santos is on the, on the board, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Santos.
And Peter, I'm on the board, too.
It'd be Counselor Santos, the speaker's list, followed by Mayor Brown.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, so we had a couple of, we had a delegation today regarding the item and application for Centennial Mall, and in having conversations with Counselor Visante, as well as with Mayor Brown and with city staff, we think that it's appropriate in terms of their particular request. We have been dealing with this issue related to regional servicing now back and forth for a while, and given we are having to meet various targets and timelines in terms of getting shovels in the ground, and also given the uncertainty around the dissolution of Peel, I think that we need to proceed. And so I've sent some amendments to the summary of recommendations from the planning minutes on Monday, and sent that to the clerk. If the clerk can bring those amendments forward on the screen. It's essentially to allow staff to use section thirty-four, five of the Planning Act in order to move things along and, and remove the hold as well. And I'm also pleased that this was not deferred so that we could deal with it today.
So through you. Okay, thank you, Counselor. So there's an amendment to the motion, Peter?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to members of council. My understanding from Counselor Santos's amendment, and we'll just get it up on the screen here, it is moving the staff recommendations with an amendment. It's PDC one thirty. And the amendment is, if you can just scroll down a little bit, Charlotte, so it's receiving the first one, first clause is receiving the planning report, second clause is approving the official plan and zoning bylaw amendments. Clause three is the amendments generally in accordance with the attachment to the staff report with direction that the staff, staff amend as appropriate to reflect the use of a section thirty-four, five of the Planning Act. And then if you can scroll down to clause four. Clause four is the amendment for the zoning bylaw, which is attachment eleven to the staff report, be adopted with direction that staff remove the holding provision and replace it with the section thirty-four, five of the Planning Act.
And Counselor, Counselor Visante will be seconding the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Santos. Mayor Brown, did you want to speak to this?
I want to speak to this one and, and then again for another item, but I can speak to this one, just say I fully support Counselor Santos's and Visante's amendment. We're in a housing crisis, and that the fact that we could have housing that is supported enthusiastically by our staff, that is in a transit corridor that meets all the ideal aspects that we expect in a, in a development for housing and jobs, that it could be delayed by the region. We've seen this, this horror movie too many times, and if there's tools that we can to expedite this to make sure this project doesn't fall off, off track, then I fully support that, and I appreciate that the ward council is thinking of a creative way to move this forward.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. It's before you, members of council. All in favor? I assume that that carries. Mayor Brown, back to you.
Yes, there's two matters that I've been advised from our Planning Commissioner, Steve Ganesh, that there is resolution to, and I believe the ward councilors will likely want to speak to it, but I'm happy to speak to it as well. I'll defer to Deputy Mayor Singh, which one he would like to deal with first.
Well, the minutes are before you, Mayor Brown. Is there one particular item that you'd like to speak to?
So I couldn't hear Counselor Singh's response there, but I believe, I believe, I believe Commissioner Ganesh has, has prepared the motions.
So through you, Chair Paleshi, I think the commissioner's is probably going to speak, but just to remind members of council, members of council need to introduce amendments. Staff cannot introduce amendments.
Through the chair, I was going to say exactly that, that amendments have been drafted for council's consideration, but we would look to. for council's consideration, but, uh, we would look to the clerk to facilitate those introductions through members of council as, as required.
Thank you, Mr. Ganesh. Um, Peter, is there anybody else on the board?
Through you, uh, Mr. Chair, Counselor Tour, followed by Counselor Keenan.
Counselor Tour.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Um, I'd like to, um, make an amendment to, uh, item seven point seven. That was on the, uh, PDC, uh, agenda that day for the recommendations, um, with the possible, with a, with amended motion that I have provided, uh, the city clerk.
So just bear with us, through you, Mr. Chair, a moment. We're just going to find that motion. There it is there. Um, so the possible motion is that the recommendation, oh, we'll just wait for Charlotte to copy it up. Just bear with us a moment, please. So seven, the, uh, motion that Counselor Tour is moving is that PDC recommendation one thirty-two, twenty twenty-three be deleted and replaced with the following. And the following is clauses one, two, and three are as per the staff report that was presented to Planning Committee on Monday, the twenty-fifth. Clause four, clause five, and clause six are, uh, new wording. I understand that may have been provided in consultation with planning staff and clause seven is just receiving the original correspondence that was, uh, that was, uh, provided to Planning Committee on Monday night and presumably there will be a clause eight because item four point one on today's agenda is correspondence on this item that has yet to be considered by council. So clause eight could be receiving item four point one on today, which is the correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Was there anything else, Counselor Tour?
Uh, that's all, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I want to bring up item seven point six, uh, two fifty-three Queen Street East, uh, Queen Street, um, the.
Okay, let, let's deal with this one and then we'll, and then we'll come to you.
Oh, sorry.
Is there any other members that'd like to speak to this amendment?
Um, it's Mayor Brown, I'm on the left.
Mayor Brown's name is up? His hand is up?
Mayor Brown.
Yeah, just to say that I support this motion from Counselor Tour. This ensures, uh, a corporate headquarters and jobs. I know this is, uh, taking significant work, uh, from our Planning Commissioner, uh, to get all parties aligned, but, uh, uh, these are, uh, jobs coming to the East End of Brampton that, uh, we should welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Um, was there anybody else on this item?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I don't see anybody else.
It's been moved by Counselor Tour, seconded by Deputy Mayor Singh, all in favor? I assume everybody supports.
I don't hear any objections, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Peter. Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I want to discuss item seven point six. Uh, the Queen Street, two fifty-three Queen Street. Um, so it's, it's the exact same thing that Counselor Santos had just done for the other, uh, project. I believe this was the original one that brought this forward in our last meeting. Uh, it's to remove the holding provision on the portion of the subject property, replace it with the section thirty-four five of the Planning Act. Um, so I believe what would need to happen is delete the referral, reinstate the staff recommendation with that direction.
So through you, Mr. Chair. So the motion is on the screen. It would be, um, there were two clauses in PDC one twenty-six, twenty twenty-three from Monday's meeting regarding item seven point six, two fifty-three Queen Street. The first clause would be, um, deleting clause two of the original recommend, or excuse me, renumbering clause two of the original recommendation to clause six. And then, uh, clause one is, which was the, uh, uh, referral, um, that Counselor Keenan referenced, be deleted and replaced with the following. And the following being clauses one, two, three, and four, which are the original staff recommendations from the planning report considered on September twenty-fifth. And clause five is a new clause, uh, in regards to removing the holding provision, um, on the applicable property and replace it with the section thirty-four subsection five of the Planning Act.
Thank you, Peter. Been moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Maderos. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing and hearing nothing? Is there anybody else that would like to speak to any of the other recommendations from planning on, uh, from Monday, the twenty-fifth?
Yep, I'd like to speak to item, uh, seven point five and.
Deputy Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Seven point five and, uh, we have some amendments to it and that'll be moved by, um, Mayor Brown and seconded by myself.
And through you, Mr. Chair, to members of council. So the motion is that clauses two and three of the original recommendation, PDC one twenty-seven, be renumbered as five and six and that clause one be deleted and replaced with the following, which includes clauses one, two, three, and four, um, as the original staff recommendations as contained in the report considered by Planning Committee on Monday, the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, is there any members that would like to speak to this? Peter, can you verify there's nobody?
Uh, there is nobody, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll go to a vote. I'll ask for it to be recorded as I do not, uh, I do not support this.
So recorded vote has been requested on the motion moved by Mayor Brown, Deputy Mayor Singh regarding PDC, uh, one twenty-seven. Um, and all those in favor, please indicate Counselor Tour or opposed.
Is the motion that's on the screen right here?
Uh, no, right there. Um, we'll just move it to a, a fresh page and then we'll. Counselor Tour is in favor. Deputy Mayor Singh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fortini? Counselor Fortini? I'll come back to you. Counselor Power is absent. Counselor Maderos?
Yes.
It's a yes. Mayor Brown?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Keenan?
Yes.
It's a yes. Chair Paleshi?
No.
It's a no. Counselor Bar?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Visante?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Santos?
Yes.
It's a yes. Counselor Fortini, how do you vote? Counselor Fortini? So Counselor Fortini is connected, but his mic is off at the moment, so, uh, he'll be marked as absent. Um, Mr. Chair, that motion carries, uh, eight to one with two absences.
Thank you, Mr. Court. Is there anybody else that would like to pull any or discuss any of the other minutes? Seeing and hearing none. I pass it back through to you, Acting Mayor, for ratification.
Thank you, uh, Chair Paleshi. I have a motion moved by Counselor Tour and seconded by Counselor Keenan, Keenan, to approve the committee recommendations as amended. Is anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Moving on to bylaws. We are now at the portion of the meeting dealing with adoption of city bylaws to give effect to council decisions made by the meeting. I have a motion moved by Counselor, yep.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to advise members of council with the approval of one of the amendments to the Planning Committee recommendations, there are two bylaws that need to be, uh, withdrawn, pulled from the agenda because there are revisions required in accordance with council's decision, they'll be presented to a future meeting. So the motion will be for consideration only of bylaws one fifty-two, twenty twenty-three to one fifty-three, twenty twenty-three, and then one fifty-six, twenty twenty-three to one fifty-nine, twenty twenty-three. One fifty-four and one fifty-five are being pulled.
Okay. I have a motion moved by Counselor Bar and seconded by Counselor Santos to approve the bylaws as said by the clerk. Is anybody opposed? Hearing and seeing none, the motion carries. Now we can deal with item seven, public question period. This is normally where we invite members of the public to come forward to the podium and ask any questions about any decision made by council at today's meeting. There's a fifteen-minute limit for all the questions and answers. I will ask the clerk if there are any questions submitted during the course of today's meeting regarding decisions made during the meeting.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, there has been a question that's been submitted. This is in regards to, um, item five point two, the Planning and Development Committee recommendations, specifically, uh, the planning item seven point two regarding the, um, Springbrook area. Uh, there are four questions, I'll read them. Um, and it's from Ramaljit Sandhu, who is one of the delegates, uh, today. Uh, why is Queen Street West between Credit View and Mississauga Road considered a transit corridor since there is only BRT proposed but not approved? This was authenticated by Counselor Paleshi. Question two, why is Queen Street West between Credit View and Mississauga Road considered a suitable area for mid and high rises as there are no highways, no plazas, no bus stations, no go station, no elementary, middle or high school close by or even proposed? Question three, why are existing residents who have spent their lifetime earnings not listened to time and again and only developers are being supported? Question four, why is Elburn, Markle, and Queen application being promoted when at the public meeting it did not meet the silver or gold sustainability levels and is super close to executive homes who have been paying premium taxes over fifteen years? Was it done or has it been done behind closed doors without public knowledge? Okay. Does staff want to attempt to answer someone's, yeah?
Uh, through, through the chair, I'll just, um, come up with a, a general answer for now and then perhaps, uh, suggest that these questions be, uh, referred to staff for consideration when we bring the, uh, final Springbrook tertiary plan back for council's consideration as directed. Uh, but just for the purpose of today's, uh, conversation, uh, want to rest assured with members of council, residents, and, uh, those who might be listening in, that, uh, no decisions or recommendations from my department or my staff are being done behind closed doors. Uh, all of the, uh, reports that my staff and my department bring forward to council are available online for anybody to, uh, review. Certainly, uh, in the last several months, uh, my staff have, have been very transparent with information, uh, to, uh, for residents to contact them and all of the, uh, reports have been delivered before, for council in an open and public transparent manner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any other members of the public have any questions? I saw somebody get up. Yep, please register after, after it's fine. Yeah, just state your name.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the, uh, the resident, if you can just state your name for the record.
Cheryl Roy.
Thank you.
Um, this is with regard to the SPA forty-five, the Elburn, Markle developments proposed. Um, we've, uh, well, at the risk of sounding like a stuck record, I have to reiterate our concerns.
Through you, Mr. Chair, it has to be in the form of a question.
Yes. Um. We have several questions, one of which is, uh, several were raised by the CBRA and I will just reiterate. Why was the traffic impact study submitted by the applicant approved as is? We raise concerns that the applicant should be required to submit an updated traffic impact study because the data collected for the traffic impact study was old and ranged from twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen. And the traffic impact study did not account for all of the new developments proposed close to the site. The traffic impact study indicated that northbound and southbound movements at Mississauga Road and Queen Street were noted to be over capacity. D, the report concluded that Mississauga Road and Queen Street would exceed capacity by twenty twenty-six and suggested that the region of Peel widen Mississauga Road sooner than originally planned. The report also captured that Credit Valley, Credit View Road and Queen Street West southbound left turn movement would exceed the available taper provisions. Question number two, when will the BRT come to Queen Street West? Can you, can you also confirm whether there is now a funding plan or budget in place to help towards Brampton's share of BRT-related costs? Number three, please identify the addresses of the ten to sixteen-story projects that have been approved that are directly adjacent to the upscale executive housing special policy areas that are zoned as residential one. Counselor Visante had asked the developers to rework the plan for the sustainability score to get to at least silver le, level instead of bronze. However, what about the compatibility of the other service level concerns? What about the south side and west side? We can see the aerial view to show compatibility. Also, I was wondering, what about the parking in those area? I mean, we don't want the overflow of, uh, of cars coming into our neighborhood. Number five, where is consolidated studies to show the complete impact between Mississauga Road and Chinkunzi Road? Why does the school board and other agencies still respond to individual files that, i.e., for the specific application? Number six, when can we have consolidated reports shared with the residents? This report should show realistic projections for population increase and proportionate impact on all services to the residents, including any increase in property taxes. Number seven, will there be any jobs created after the development, retail business analysis and impact study? How can we plan without clarity on the purpose of use? Number eight, who will be responsible and accountable to meet targets, expectations for all essential services for the residents? Uh, why has, uh, I mean, uh, it was suggested that affordable housing should be made available to the, um, the immigration and, you know, the concerns by Premier Doug Ford? And how come they picked the most expensive area in, uh, in Brampton to, uh, to build, um, to build high-rise projects? Number nine, why, uh, number ten, why can't we have more townhouse public consultation processes as a dialogue, as a way to develop the city together? Why not with the impacted public, city planning team, councilors, local MPs, MPPs, organized by the developer for the full transparency and inclusive process? We are very frustrated with this whole, um, Queen Street corridor developments, extremely. And, um, I speak on behalf of my neighbors and everyone else on, you know, from Mississauga Road up to Credit View, that this has been a very frustrating process. And I'm shocked that we, we're not in a third world country. This has been a really frustrating uphill battle. For the last two years, we've been pouring our hearts out to no avail. And it is an eye-opener for me. Uh, everyone is citing the, um, MZO as a crutch, as a, uh, you know, that, okay, we, these, uh, these, these builders, um, these, um, developers have a vision nonsense. All they see is the dollars as, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, do staff want to attempt to answer that at a high level?
Yeah, sure. Uh, through the chair, thank you very much for the, uh, questions. I, I think if I could summarize, uh, there, there's two parts of questions, some questions in relation to a specific development application that was not, uh, considered at the Planning Committee meeting on Monday. Um, then there was another, uh, theme of questions that were in relation to the Springbrook tertiary plan that was. And certainly the direction that staff received on Monday was to, um, come back with a plan that, um, sort of respects some of the existing well-established communities, that respects principles of contact-sensitive design in order to address some of the previous concerns and questions from, uh, the residents. So we'll certainly be doing that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Just state your name for the record, please.
Ted Brown.
Thank you.
Uh, question in regard to, uh, two fifty-three Queen Street East. Um, many of you know we are, uh, one of the tenants in that particular, uh, building with, uh, uh, and we have a vested interest in knowing what the next steps are for the developer. Uh, I am a hundred percent in, in support of developing and we need, it's a crisis around housing. Um, but I just need to know what, what is going to happen with the development, uh, with the, with the developer and, and the timing that will be involved. If anybody can answer.
Through the chair, thank you very much for the question. Uh, certainly, um, with the direction and decision of council today with the enacting zoning bylaw, the next steps for the developer would then be to work with, uh, my department through the site plan approval process. And, uh, once that, uh, process is complete, the developer then would be enabled to, uh, apply for building permits to start construction. Um, my staff are actually sitting right beside you, who probably have more of the intimate details on timing and feel free to talk to them about, uh, that if you wish.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing and hearing none. We will, now we are at the, at the question period. So next item is Item 8, closed session business. I have a motion moved by Counselor Keenan and seconded by Counselor Santos to move into closed session to deal with the following item. The council will proceed, open meeting exception under Section 2392 C and K of the Municipal Act 2001. All in favor? The motion carries. We will go at 2:05, okay? Sorry, thank you.